I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before it stands the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads at this point? The agenda was presented. It's going to take us to the sheriff's report. We have nothing. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything for the sheriff's office that they would wish to address? That'll close out the sheriff's report, detective's report, or sign off? Good question. Any more details on the checkpoints?
Thank you.
And then that'll close out the detective's report. Takes us to unfinished business, and then turn that over to Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one, I just want to let the board know that we are all set for the Plain Township Auction on May 17th at 10:00 a.m. We just finalized the time, so it will be at 10:00 a.m.
That is at the road garage.
And then item number two, I will turn over to Mr. Steinberg about the farmer's market.
So we finalized our goals and then kind of numbers for the farmer's market, and we thought we would hold one on Monday from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. From the timeframe of June 23rd through August 11th of this year. We'd be charging an annual registration fee of $15, plus the $10 weekly space fee. And obviously, we have rules and things as presented at the previous board meeting to you folks, but it looks like it would be a fairly comfortable due. We have access to vendors we're reaching out to currently. And as for the directive of Mr. Lino, we are going to keep it small for year one and just probably max out between 10 and 15 booth spaces so that we aren't overcrowding the park for the event. It would be held at Schneider Community Park.
What time does this start?
It'd be June 23rd from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. It'd be Mondays, June 23rd through August 11th.
As far as raw, are you just looking for final sign off? I know last time you brought it to our awareness was going to work on some details. I see this as normal programming that we don't...
Typically, you don't sign off for this, but we certainly wanted to let you folks know what our final numbers came out as. If you had questions or concerns, you could vet them and things. But we feel fairly confident this could be a good go. And we stayed away from other well-known, well-established markets on... Well, I think Greens is on Tuesdays, Jervosi's Wednesdays, Jackson Township's Thursdays, North Canton and Canton and Hartville on Saturdays. So we think we've been filling a niche in a day. We aren't interfering with any friends or partners or whatnot, so that we can be fulfilling our own niche.
And we've already started receiving phone calls from vendors before it was even finalized.
I know. I expect... As I say, I know I expressed an interest about this in the past when your predecessor was here. I'm glad to see this is able to come to fruition in shape personally, so...
Honestly, I think it's a fairly term key, and I think that it's fairly easily managed. I think you just have to establish a criteria, which as you can see, we have, and stick to it and be consistent with it. Our goal is to stay with local growers and local vendors, so...
With respect to that, I hope department, is there any involvement that you would need to...
The vendors themselves are required to meet health code standards. That's not our bailiwick, but they have to meet them prior to bidding.
Good. Nice work.
That's all I have.
And that ends unfinished business.
Thank you. That's going to take us to new business. I'm going to keep that with Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. The item under number one is our healthcare insurance renewal. And I have a resolution made hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to accept the attached proposal with Alt Care to administer Plain Township's medical insurance program for the period of June 1st, 2014, through May 31st, 2015.
Second discussion, just as clarification, when we say Alt Care, that's for TPA, reinsurer, and network.
And network.
Cross the board. In addition to that, as I noted during the work session, I want to see by next meeting the credits, the premiums, and a defined timetable with when we would roll all of that out. So whether it's a three or four month time period to get that done, obviously, we can't get everybody to read all up and understand it in a month or two, but have a defined timetable for having that ready and in place along with the HSA details as well.
And Mr. Flex, if you will put in the resolution, Alt Care as the TPA, reinsurer, and network. But yes, Mr. Haas, we will have that ready.
Again, thanks for the work. With Lisa, it's actually pleasantly nice to take a look at these numbers this year as compared to some of the past ones, so... Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hollis?
Yes. Okay, that closes out new business. It's going to take us to the fiscal officers' report, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Flex.
Mr. President. First, on the agenda, is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, how to authorize the payment of pending warrants in an amount of $267,812.81.
So moved. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the payment of regular payroll in the amount not to exceed $220,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, how to authorize the following medical claims as provided by Alt Care and Express Drive.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number four is the investment report. The CD that matured on Monday was invested with first married, .25 for 12 months.
So five basis points from the .20. And that is about... Four cents. And that is about $3.
Specialty.
Totally rock. That's a shame.
Fiscal Officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, how to authorize the following transfers.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer number six A is just a request for a liquor license. This is at the Chicken Manor. This was a new one. This is from Linda sent out the email to the sheriff and everything to verify. Just no issues or concerns with that location. Obviously, they've been adopted for quite a while.
This is a new license?
Yes. Normally, they're held, but we're on a very short timeline to get it back to the commissioners. So we did verify with the sheriff's office that there's no issues.
Now, is that precinct wet or is it site-specific over there?
Fisher's was not site-specific.
I'll have to check on that.
I thought that was site-specific though.
Fisher Foods was site-specific though, and the bar over there at Lightwood Plaza in Barrow, and those were site-specific also.
About built as site-specific.
Chicken Manor.
Yeah, but I mean, it was specific for the site, not for the precinct wide. So we need to make sure that that precinct is even eligible for an open liquor license without being put on the ballot. I mean, not that Chicken Manor is going to create an issue. We just do need to make sure that Chicken Manor understands fully if any, that precinct is not wet. They didn't have to collect the signatures to get it on a ballot.
I would on the ballot.
No, only for Fisher... Site-specific would be...
No, I thought Chicken Manor was on.
But that's what we're asking to be verified. Because Chicken Manor...
Did you want to put one on the ballot?
Yeah. It's not resolved, but...
Questions? I'm sorry. I mean, I don't think the board has any objection. We just need to make sure that they're eligible. Correct. Suppending confirmation.
Yes.
We have no reason to hold it unless it would come back otherwise. And six B is for the grinders. It's a renewal of liquor. Again, we check with the sheriff's office.
Yes.
That's the end of the fiscal officer report.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. And we'll turn it back over to Mr. Campbell for the administrators' report.
Item number one is a resolution for the board trustees to authorize the purchase of the janitorial cleaning supplies and to authorize the payment in an amount of $3,054.33 and to be dispersed from the following guns.
Also moved. Discussion. This is what we went to that centralized purchasing.
This is centralized purchasing. It has worked out very well. It has saved us a very good bit of money. You'll see, normally, we could have done just separate POs, but we're purchasing cooperatively together. And also, what had been happening prior to this is we have 10 different cleaning companies, 10 different cleaning supplies in every different building. So now, we stick to one different kind of, you know, floor cleaner, rug cleaner, window cleaner. So it's all the same here within the township, and it has saved a lot of money here in the township, so...
Just roll call. Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis? Yes.
Item number two is to amend the attached job descriptions for the road department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes. And we'll close out the administrators. Going to take us to our fire department, and I'm going to turn that over to Chief Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is to waive the tent permit fee for the Save Kids Coalition Day. It's going to be held at the Township Center Park on May 15th.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Item number two is to authorize purchase of gas, gasoline, oil, decent fuel, not to exceed $20,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And item number three is to agree to a change order from General Contract of DCLC for a deduct of unused signage allowance to new station of an amount of $9,285.50.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Item number four is to authorize a change in the Plain Township Board of Trustees to permit the inspection fee structure as attached.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. I know we sat down with Troy Clon. Thanks for following up on the hours on the one business segment. For our purposes, department heads, whenever we have any interaction, we need to stress the amount of time that's over there when we're pressed for certain things or things. So, having said, roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And item number five is to authorize the attendance to the payment for a firefighter per base to attend the fire safety instructor's course at Stark State College, which will be hosting on a special station.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes. You did?
Right in time.
Not yet.
Soon. Is that what you were doing at Wacom? Yeah.
The expedition, the expedition was...
Two weeks.
Two more weeks.
We could have two.
So both the expedition, slawjegger, and all be part of the option?
Yeah, they come out to purchase the local vehicles from the project.
It's going to take us to the road department, and turn Mr. Icemo.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a list of 2014 road material bids that we received and opened in the following companies. Actually, we have savings this year.
It actually went down?
The gravel bids average per ton saved by $2.10, which is pretty large for us. The limestone bid was only about $0.60 a ton, but it still saves. And overall asphalt bid, we're going to change from where we normally get it because it's going to save us about $9 a ton for in-house use of asphalt.
Wow. That's just great. I think as we've talked, that's amazing. That can be such a part.
Very surprising, Mr. Chairman. Very surprising. Moving on to item number two is a resolution determining the best interest of township for considering these bids and the cost of the materials. It's the resolution to award the 2014, 2015 road material contracts to the following companies as listed.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number three is actual signing of the contracts with each individual vendor that we will be using. Several contracts.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
If I can, just interject real quick, Joe, because I forgot to note at the beginning of the record, let it reflect, Mr. Lino's not here this evening because he's on vacation. He had given prior notice, so... Go ahead. Yeah.
Item number four is a resolution to purchase a 2014 Ford F-250 pickup with a six-story utility bed from one of the following two vendors, Wacom Ford, or Eleven Ford, which is probably the still purchasing contract. After getting all the information and tallying up all the totals for what we want in this vehicle, they're about $500 apart. And I left the line I had opened for the board to decide if we want to stay local.
Which one's less expensive?
The one from Kentucky. State bid's about $500.
That means a big difference when it comes to service.
Does it matter one way or the other? I mean, I've talked to Wacom's, and they can get it as quickly as, probably quicker than the one from Kentucky.
Well, the fact that we're keeping the money local, and when it comes to service, I know even though some of these dealers are all serviced and under warranty, you get a little bit smaller attention if you actually purchased the truck there too, so...
This is what we're basing our old design truck that is rotting away will be in the opposite.
So essentially, Joe, for the resolution purposes on this, who would be...
Purchasing it from Wacom Auto, not to exceed the amount of $28,983.
Also move on that. And we'll second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
All right. Item number four, more informational for the board in case... We're putting together our table. Of course, finance is a big problem. I've given the board members a copy of how we break the roads after we've been doing this for six or seven years. We went to a state school for the ODOT, taught us how to do this. And the far-right in columns is the poor conditioning rating, because you can see some of them are pretty low. In the past, we've been trying to repay anything over 50% poor rating. I don't know if I'm going to get there this year. I put together a list of streets that we feel are the worst. If that is on your computer there. And then, of course, we have Snyder Road, which we've been discussing, discussing for some time. I met out there with the county last week. They gave me their, what they think we should do to it, and we're going to probably have to pave it at least two inches instead of an inch and a half of 448, which we know asphalt that we're using is harder to get down deeper, because there is a lot... We're going to go in and do some in-house repairs where we can. But to really do it right, we're talking totally grinding it down to the base and redoing it. I mean, this alone will cost about $250,000 just to use Snyder Road, the striping and everything we have with that. If we would do it the proper way, we'd probably be looking at a million dollars to take it all and put it all back.
So approximately a third of our paving budget for this year on one road.
And the rest of the list, I think we're good on what we did last year in the allotments.
It felt all well.
Well, for those, I mean, we've been about a worse winter. Right now, I'm at an estimate of about $690,000 without any of the striping yet, because I'm still working on that, because Snyder Road's going to take extensive striping with all the schools owned and crosswalks and turn lanes. So we're probably looking at $25,000 going in there just to strip Snyder Road. So we're going to be on our max budget.
Let me ask you, Mr. Snyder, by doing what you're talking about doing with Snyder with the heavy traffic and the buses and the extra weight, I mean, is doing this this way, what's the longevity of that road going to be versus...
The estimate with the materials that are offered to us today, ten years.
So you think it'll last ten years?
You know, making it in-house. That's... The last time we paved it was when the school was open, 2005 or '16. Did not last that long, but we're going to be skin-covered by the thing, so...
I was a skin-coverer this year, but I'm sure you're a rough one.
Passengers could really top it. I just, if the board gets phone calls, there's a list for you to have. As you can see, we've got some questions about Avondale. We've got water lines going to be placed in a lot of the neighborhoods in Avondale for the next two years. I'm not going to go in and pave those roads, and then they're going to come in and give them all up to replace it. I know there's streets over there right now that are assessing getting paid. I talked to the homeowners association over there, and they were okay with it. It's, you know, we don't have the money that we used to have. It used to be a 10-year, Lou, you probably remember this, every 10 years, we're paying everything. We're up to 14 or 15 years now, so... We're fixing all the bad spots that we can in-house with our grinder and small favor that the board got us. It's working fine, just to keep ahead of the ballgame.
Well, here's the other thing, Scott, is that I think that we need to be looking at here soon, is that if we don't start seriously looking at addressing this issue financially, I mean, that dirty work, I mean, we haven't gone back for an increase in the road department for, how long has it been since?
Three levees.
We, we had a renewal, our regular replacement two levees ago, but before that, we'd never increased the mileage.
So it's always brought in the same amount?
It's always been the same mileage, 1.5, since I've been here 23 years.
But the only problem is, is like, we used to do it a 10-year cycle, and now we're up to 14.
At the time when you guys had that, asphalt was also probably half the cost of the ground, too.
But... But we're up to 14 years. If we keep delaying this, pretty soon, it's going to be every 16, and the roads are really going to get into a condition where it's going to ultimately start causing a tax bill. There's a lot more money, because you're going to have to start grinding them all the way out to get them fixed properly, or you're going to have to allow them to deteriorate to the points where anybody can drive around to some of these other places around us and see what that's got to do.
We've got phone calls today about what people think, or is that we've got a lot.
I see you've exchanged some prior emails too on folks just sending...
We've got some questions and calls today about...
But I guess my point is, I mean, the paving list that we're looking at right now, I'm fine with, but I think we need to give Joe and Lisa some direction about contacting the author and getting some estimates about the possibility of placing something on the ballot.
Sooner than later.
Sooner than later.
All right.
To that, and obviously, you guys have done your homework here with the number of streets and the shape they're in, so obviously, you know what it costs per road mile. You can talk to the outlook that...
What the need is...
What the total need, need is, is obviously, it won't all be done in one year.
No.
It takes it, but if we could...
If we had it back to 12 years, that would be really helpful, you know?
But we're going to have to catch up on the road miles we're behind.
Right. That's just, it's going to keep happening. You don't fall in the road department behind.
We can calculate the need per year for the next four years, then we can figure out the mileage. We can work on that number to make the requesting...
Because the other, the other answer to that equation too is we chose the budget. We got equipment down there that's 20-plus years old, and that's going to start needing to be replaced, and we're going to have to start making the decision whether we're going to replace equipment or pave streets, and that's even for this park we're behind.
We have two trucks that we have this year, which we're very grateful for, but that's also something that starts to snowball to...
So this is all going to start to snowball.
Okay. Item number...
Six.
Six. We should have a letter from the Hall of Fame Marathon Group. This is, I'm going to go around on my, but this is a letter that... This is what they're actually taking out to the residents' homes that are on the course. This will be done tomorrow, Thursday evening. They're going to try to talk to every resident on that whole course in the townships and in Tennessee. It's very well-worked, it's wet, wetter. We got a picture on a map, and they also even have a time that they'll be on those streets, the runners should be on those streets and off those streets. We've, the fire department chief and I have already sent in our estimated cost for working the race, which is this Sunday. We were told that it's going to get paid soon as they get it at the last minute, maybe last minute. So it sounds like they might be short again with long ears, but it sounds like they're going to be covering it all there, then the last minute. So you have this letter in case you're, you know, you're going to get phone calls, you did, we do every year, so...
You can give the tiebreaker down for our last one.
And we have a lot smaller courses in our townships, so...
Thanks, Joe.
And item number seven is a resolution to hire a Quinn bender as a summer employer of the road department effective May 12th at a rate of $9 per hire with no benefits. All pending pre-employment drug and alcohol screen results.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion chose, this is my new, or is this my, we're breaking back?
This is a new one. We have a shooter, he's in Tennessee, he's going to stay there. This is a new one, we had a guy here, he's in Tennessee, he's going to stay there, he's going to college, he's not going to come back.
Michael?
He was dad's brother, yes, dad had a job down there, so.
He was a good kid.
Yeah, he was, he came to visit us last week.
Roll call. Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. R. Ford.
Okay, that's going to take us to the zoning department, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Falk.
Thank you, gentlemen, repeat and please, Mr. Steinberg, that's for these, Mr. G. Basis, Mr. Hoss and Mr. Campbell, if you would please. So I want to give you an update on our moving Ohio Forward demolition program, it's completed. We completed sixteen properties and they've been all demolished and finished rated. You've got a, kind of a before and after photo of each of the properties we did and the actual costs involved with each one of those. Our, our total cost is one-hundred-and-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and seventy cents. We are in the process right now of finalizing our packets to submit to the reutilization committee to get our reimbursement for our part. I think the program was worth it. It obviously evolved a lot from what it was initially presented to us as being. We, we learned a lot, we learned on the fly a lot on how to administer one of these programs and what was involved with it. Though we were very deliberate, we worked very well with Mr. Williams and the rest of the staff in the township, but I think the program worked well. We have received numerous thanks from area residents on.
I was going to say, look, it's something you have to express that.
Yeah, and they did a beautiful job.
Yeah, we had a good, we had a good contractor, that obviously helped a lot, especially just being our first time through the program. If it comes back up again, I think we should reevaluate, reevaluate our type of participation, how we want to go about it, but I would think we would want to take a look at it. I'm pleased with it, a lot of work, I'm pleased with it.
Well, I understand the pain exactly that you're talking about, being the township representative for all seventeen townships on that. Yeah, I'm amazed I haven't been shot, shot at over, over this, but, you know, it has helped to eliminate quite a bit of light. I know even somewhere like the city of Canton, they've got like one-hundred-and-ninety-three houses, two-hundred-and-sixteen units leveled, so solely by, but surely, I do know there's potentially some phase two money that may come into play later this year, but it depends what happens with what's expended here from the first phase. The SCLRC awarded the bid, awarded the bid to regional planning for moving forward for all oversight administration, because that was one of those things where with the land banks starting off, quite frankly, all this, this full climate is in being board representatives, trying to juggle certain pieces of trying to get policy and process in, in place, made it more than interesting, so hopefully moving forward through regional planning that should help make things move a lot faster, a lot smoother, you know, a lot of things can more clearly be defined because of the process, so.
Each of the packets that we're going to be presenting, the SCLRC for reimbursement, probably going to be about three quarters of an inch. I didn't see it. It's not environmentally good.
No, it's a lot, yeah, it's a lot bureaucratic. Well, the next question here is too, is how many inquiries have we got yet from the adjacent property?
I, I have three on hold right now. And I'm working with a couple of other individuals who are looking at stepping on board. I wanted, I, I have, the reason I have three on hold is I wanted to make sure that everything was wrapped up with them, obviously before proceeding. I'm working with Glenn Green.
One of these things also. Well, I do, I do know there's, Glenn Green, who's Canton City representative, but who does all the reporting out, had noted during our board meeting on Monday that I think there was about four-hundred-some applications, which one-hundred-and-fifty-some were wiped out for a number of reasons. There's about a hundred and four to a hundred and ten that are pending some type of decision back from the political subdivision. Some of those may have been initiated on our behalf, but it is possible that there's applications that go in directly to the land bank. And in those situations, that's where they're going to make, Danny and ourselves, privy to that. But what they'll do is they'll try to ferret out some other, because what we're seeing with some of these applications that come in are some of the folks are saying, well, yeah, I want that lot, but I'm not even current on my own taxes on the auto lot. Well, I'm not going to give you another lot that you.
There's a whole list of criteria that has to be, it has to be met in order to be qualified.
So outside of the side lot, there's some things that are going to be done too with a vacant, with a vacant lot that should help open it up a little further, because with the side lot corner, unless you're an immediate joint property owner, you're sort of out, but the board does have some policy work on vacant lot to where, say, you're living where you do over in Stonehenge, and for some reason you've got an interest in a lot over here in Royal Ridge, you'll be able to submit for that, so that'll help.
Well, and the other thing too is, because of the situation with the property right now, with the house being demolished and levelled, we go in and make these properties, there's no money to be reimbursed for.
Yeah.
So we need, and you guys are doing a fantastic job, especially Scott's working his tail off.
Yeah, we're, we're developing, we're developing a list of all, I'm kind of doing what Mr. Green has been doing. I'm looking at all applicable adjacent neighbors, what can be done also, and then we're going to reach out to those people also. They may not, a lot of people may not be aware of it, it's a real job, they want to know, here it is.
Because if they're current, they meet the criteria, it's a hundred bucks, and they've, and they've got the side lot, all they've got to do is maintain, maintain, maintain it and pay the property.
And probably taxes, most of these are going to be very minimal for the course of the year, but it's all, it's all from bar books. I know Derek is not going to have any, obviously some of these, these are routine properties, you know, you have to repeat. All of these, all of these properties will repeat.
Well, I can recognize them, these, especially a couple of these, I think they're going back twenty years since I've been here.
And again, they were, it's important to remember that all the properties were vacant, they were abandoned, they were nuisance properties, and all the liquid in taxes. And once again, I, I think it's, it's a good program, we just need to reevaluate our, our type of, and type of participation with, but right in front of everybody, I really want to give a real hats off to Mrs. Mesker. We, we, we learned a lot together, we banged heads so many different times on things that would come up, and things changed in the midstream a couple of times, and we kind of had to recreate them a few times, but we were very deliberate with it, and I'm very happy with how we've turned up.
Thanks again, Daniel, let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you as well.
And to the foregoing.
Close the zoning, it's going to take us to Parks Department, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Steinberg.
Item number one is just a review of the Easter egg hunt. We hosted over a thousand children on April twelfth at our Easter egg hunt. There's some pictures in our recap here, kind of how the day went. We had the Stark County Sheriff's, I handed the copy kids program in the community room. Easton McDonald's donated volunteers as well as snacks and drink for all participants. Charter One Bank donated product and candy to help supply the kids with Friends and Playing Parks. We made a financial donation to help offset the cost of our purchase of candy. And Sam's Club and Target also did the same, so we had some help and some offsetting of costs, and it was a nice day. We included our DJ this year, and the NHS kids came out to give the volunteer, and we had a volunteer Easter bunny that worked out really, really well. So we have officially hired her in a non-paying volunteer capacity for every mascot we may need in the upcoming four to five years, and I know she'll be around, so.
Just like the record reflects, she will be my direct replacement. You did, you did it the first year, I found my service.
Well, I know, that doesn't count.
I'm not so sure about the non-paying.
That doesn't count.
As long as she's involved in that.
You did a fantastic job, but we still need to get Uncle Scott in that uniform.
I'm going to need to make that motion because I'm happy to. It'll, it'll, Dr. Secker, roll call, I promise.
Fair enough, fair enough, all told, it was a good day, and I'll just continue with that because we had the Holly Hills Eleven U baseball tournament going on at the opposite end of the complex at the same time, Saturday and Sunday, following in Danny's footsteps. I'm going to give a shout out to our grounds crew who did a phenomenal job, because the day and a half before, we had nothing but rain. We had three-inch puddles on all the fields. Those guys came in and got the fields ready at six AM that day to make sure that they could be played on. They actually stopped out for the Easter egg hunt and then checked on our season while we had work on, just to make sure the fields were in good shape, did a wonderful job all weekend long, and a lot went on their own time, just because they cared about the fields and the way they learned and the way they played. So I got to give a lot of credit to Derek and Sean, the group that put forth a ton of effort, so I really appreciate what they did for us. If you have any questions about that, I'll move on to item number three. We have secured the Canton Ag and Ultimate Association Frisbee League from five-twenty-nine to seven-twenty-four, including their tournament on August ninth, and it'll gross north of two-five-hundred dollars in new programming for us, so we're excited to have them back, not back, but on site. It wasn't the original tournament we were seeking, but it actually worked out better because it's a local group and they want to, they want to expand.
Well, is this Frisbee golf or Frisbee?
This is ultimate Frisbee, it is a form of soccer and football meets Frisbee on, on the athletic fields. They had a small league in our indoor facility this past winter, and have expanded the play, so. There's no questions on that, we'll keep the train rolling. Item number four is a resolution to hire Kimberly Dale as a new concession worker for the Parks Department, effective date April twenty-three, twenty-fourteen, at a rate of seven ninety-five per hour with no benefits paid from five to fourteen, A, O, one, B.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Final item for Parks tonight will be the hiring of Mr. Brad Ritchie as a Parks and Facilities Department seasonal maintenance employee, effective date also April twenty-three, twenty-fourteen, at a rate of ten dollars per hour with no benefits.
First, second, discussion, roll call. Mr. Hoss? Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
Thank you, I conclude, Parks.
Thank you, Rob, nice job as usual.
The law director, again, let the record reflect, the law director's proved, proved, proved to absence due to another commitment. It's going to take us to Communications on a term that are, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, my communication this night is from the Regional Planning that it is time again for the CDVG application workshop for the funding year two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen on Wednesday, August twentieth, from nine to eleven-thirty, it's at the Regional Planning Commission Conference Room. We must have people in attendance, or we lose points on any applications. What's nice about this run of applications is that they are redoing the maps where we have funding options and opportunities available, so that should work well to our advantage because we were really running out of projects. So it'll be nice to see those maps, I know that I'll be able to go, this is for us to know. We will be able to go, Danny, it might even move you to also attend because I don't know if there may be some other joint economic projects that we may be able to apply, so if we attend, we will get more points. And I would like to keep one of us on the board who judges the applications, it helps. I've sat on the board, followed by Joe, if you attend, Danny, I'd like to see you volunteer for that board. It does, it does help us, so just mark that on your calendars and we will attend that day. And that's all I have for communications.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, it's going to take us to our public speech. It's an opportunity for anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the board, anybody? I was going to say, Peter Cotton Taylor, the gentleman who was Mr. Photo Janet giving the bunny bunny ears, it's part of our permanent record.
Your son picked out that picture.
He'll laugh next year. Thank you.
No motions are allowed from the floor out.
See, I don't fit in it any longer.
That, there's nothing to our little speech, concerns of testes, do you have any?
No, and Joe, good job keeping all the streets in line and giving us that list thing.
I'm just hoping that we don't be a lot of phone calls.
Streets, we've been starting to.
Well, we're probably sixty percent complete. We've been out as often as we can in the last couple, three weeks. Weather's changed a few, snowstorms here and there.
As usual, Lisa, glad you're back.
Thank you.
Concerns to the fiscal office, are there any?
No.
All right, it's going to take us to the approval of minutes, I'm going to move on to our regular meeting for April eighth, two thousand fourteen.
My second, though.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
And I'll move on to special meeting for April seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Discussion, roll call. Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss? Mr. Hoss? Yes, I'm sorry about that. I'm going to make the motion that we adjourn at six forty-nine PM from this regular meeting of the county township board and trustees. Discussion, roll call. Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.